...High School. She had some classmates perform part of the crucible during Fine Arts Education Day at the Capitol, and she says performing arts needs teamwork.
Because every single person has to pull their weight for the show to be what it could be. So it's a lot of teamwork, a lot of team building, and it's a lot of self-confidence. It's a real confidence booster. It helps with public speaking. There's so many benefits to make theater in high school.
The Missouri Arts Education Alliance believes the arts should be recognized as a core component of the academic curriculum and urges school districts to strengthen the quality and availability of fine arts education. If you have just been elected to your local Board of Education, congratulations and welcome to school board service. One of the first things you'll want to do is complete the 16 hours of training required by state law and provided by MSBA. Half of the 16 hours can be completed online, with the other half provided at various locations in the state throughout the year. Visit the MSBA website for a complete schedule of training opportunities. There is no cost to participate in the required training. Be sure to attend the MSBA Spring Regional Meeting in your area of the state. Those meetings will be held in April and May and will feature a presentation on the new Every Student Succeeds Act. Also, mark your calendar for the annual MSBA Leadership Summit to be held June 4th and 5th at the Lake of the Ozarks. Registration information for that event is posted on the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Also, under Communications, we have two items that's come in that I asked Mrs. Aborn to read to us tonight.
Their first one is due to the death of Sheila Miller's mother, and Sheila Miller is our high school secretary. And she says, "Our one Board of Education, we have seen God's grace in all the caring people like you that have reached out to us. The flower arrangement is beautiful. Blessings to Miller family, Sheila, Doug, and Colton." And the other is an invitation to the next quarterly legislative gathering that will be held on Friday, April 22nd, from 10:30 to noon at the Mock Wellness Center in Ava. The different views of people from a wide variety of public and private agencies and organizations are vitally important to fully represent our community. We appreciate your active involvement in our region. We look forward to seeing you on April 22nd at 10:30. And then there's an RSVP to Judy Shields at 417-683-4594. They need to know how many people are going to attend, so they have enough chairs set up.
Thank you. Next item is Public Comments, and we do have David Flegel signed up.
Yes.
Flegel.
I'm David Flegel. Good evening. I'm your committee man for Benton Township, Ava area, and the committee and other folks are concerned about Common Core education. We've been here from time to time back in presentations. I'd like to welcome the new members to the board. For the last month, we passed out this information to the board members. So bring you guys up to screen if I may. And I'd like to invite you folks, if you would, once you have a dress down, so the community can go through directly. I'll set it off. I'd like to read a part of a letter from Dr. Mary Byrne to Roy Blunt, our senator. She made at an event and wrote this letter to him. She says, "Common Core state standards are misrepresented to the American people as rigorous academic standards per the party. That will close the achievement gap observed between demographic groups in America under the guise of leveling the playing field of opportunity in America. In fact, the Common Core state standards are a component of a process to fundamentally transform America from a land of equal opportunity for all to public schools that provided a liberal arts education that was reserved for the aristocracy in Europe to a land populated by classes of people divided into government elitists and workforce serfs, just as Wilson described in his 1909 speech, the meaning of liberal education." And she gives a reference to it. Now, as then, using the circumstances of people in poverty or unemployed in America, in America, as covered for the hijacking of our educational system, our constitutionally protective right of pursuit of happiness endowed by our Creator, just on the worthy of our federal government. She ends with, "Senator, contrary to the descriptors of the workforce development designers, American citizens are not human capital to be trained for the goals of employers or a statist economy. The view of human beings as human capital reduces a free people under God to serve them under tyrants. American citizens are human beings with a God-given and aliable right to their own pursuit of happiness. That distinction has motivated Americans to reject a tyrannical government in the 1700s and is still the motivation of Americans to defend their freedom from tyrants today. A great deal of American blood is be shed on our soil and on foreign lands throughout the past several centuries to procure and preserve human dignity for individuals wholly possible, but protected by a government that knows its purposes, protects its citizens rather than develop serfs. The clandestine trampling of our American rights and liberties guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution should be exposed and eliminated by our federal government. Instead, the process of undermining the Constitution is funded and administered by federal programs aligned to Marxist ideologies in the Department of Labor and the Department of Education. As a senator from Missouri, chairman of the South Committee on the Departments of Labor, Health, Human Services, Education, and related agencies, I urge you to put a stop to the undermining of our God-given rights of the U.S. Constitution and our American freedom. No federal dollars should be allocated to programs whose goals are oppressive to human freedom and unconstitutional in the United States of America." So these materials are available online. Dr. Byrne is based, lives in Springfield, and she's taken the responsibility to talk about Common Core across the country and especially Missouri. She came here a couple months ago and presented a PowerPoint program to the board, and that program is also available online. If you would like to learn more about it, after we pass the addresses on that board round, I'll pack them out and circulate it around here. You can sign up for Communications from Mary Byrne herself at the meeting. I'll pass it off. To finish that little presentation, and this letter is what I handed out to the board members last month and to our new members this evening. But to finish, here's a quote a friend just sent me today. It's from Frederick Douglas. He was a slave in Talbot County, Maryland, and he went on to educate himself. He taught himself how to read and write. It was forbidden for slaves to learn such skills at that time, and went on to be a spokesman for Americans. But he says, "Power conceives nothing without a demand. It never did and it never will. Find out just what any people will quietly submit to, and you have found out the exact measure of injustice and wrong which will be imposed upon them, and these will continue until they resist it with either words or clothes and with both. The limits of tyrants are prescribed by the endurance of those they oppress." He said that in 1857. And one more quote I found online. He said, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." Thanks for your time, and let me take the board off.
No, that's it? It's took...
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Flegel.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item is the Ava Board Spotlight. First, we have a local talk. Mr. Hall.
All right. We're going to recognize Chris Drew and Jason Mark. Earlier this month, they came and spoke to our kindergarten first and second grade students regarding bike safety. Currently, we're holding a poster contest with those students. The first place boy and first classer in each grade will get a brand-new bicycle. They're also providing helmets for any student K1 or 2 who needs one, and they're partnering with Children's Miracle Network to make that happen. So we really appreciate what they're doing for our students.
Right under there. Okay. You're not blocking it, are you? All right. Got it. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thanks, Robles. Next item on the agenda is under the Ava Board Spotlight. The district is Oka, our food service provider. Mrs. Nash?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize Oka tonight, and I'd like to have Ms. Carmen Aborn, who is our supervisor here at the Ava Arlen School District, and then her boss, Ms. Finley. You guys will stand up. Oka has been a great support to our students and to our billing initiatives and our programs, and we'd just like to thank them for everything that they do. Just a few of the things that they have done so far this year is they have catered the Chamber of Commerce luncheon hosted by the school this month. They have provided grab-and-go lunches for our high school, lunches and breakfast for our high school students, and they greatly enjoy that because they get to use the commons area over here, and that has increased our participation within those programs. They have provided MAP and EOC free breakfast for our students for each MAP testing day. And then anytime that we ask them for attendance incentives or different things like that, they're always willing to listen and to help whenever they can. They will also be providing a catered luncheon for our seniors on their last day of school. We have that reminder because we have such a busy day that day, and they help us with that, and we'd just like to say thank you.
Come on, lady. Come on. You didn't come here for nothing. Now, get over here beside me.
Give it to them because they're at the back home. I just...
Well, we got to skip this way, yeah. Gotcha. Thank you, guys. They do make awesome cinnamon rolls, salads, all kinds of things I've tasted.
Lasagna was good the other day at the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, next item is the Principal and Director Reports. Elementary principal, Mr. Hall.
All right. Can you give you a piece of paper? It's got our celebration events. These are the evening, like, award ceremonies, preschool through 4th grade. Love to have a board member at each one to pass out awards if you can make it. Just contact me and let me know, especially if you've got a tie to a certain grade level. Thank you.
Thank you. Middle school principal, Mrs. Swash.
During the second week of MAP testing, we test for four weeks, and it's going very well. I want to thank John Doan, Justin Gilmore, and Brooke Melton. They've put a lot of time into planning, and our teachers have worked really hard. For us to test, we all have to be able to be flexible with each other and work with the high school and also the elementary. I just want to thank them. I also want to thank the Kiwanis. They are sponsoring our middle school students now, every month, that are Students of the Month, and our students get to attend a luncheon at Pizza Hut and be recognized, and just want to thank them for that. So, thank you.
High school principal, Mrs. Nash.
Ava High School is getting ready to refresh our enrichment intervention program. We're going to be calling it the DRAFT, Developing Relationships and Focus Teaching. And so last week, I took a group of teachers down to Reed Springs to look at their draft program. This week, we are training teachers, and next week, we'll be talking with students. We're going to try these last few weeks of school to see how it's going to go and then make modifications for next year, but we're looking forward to that.
Great, thank you. Manus Director, Mr. Valentine. He was here, I guess he left. School nurses, Mrs. Stafford and Ms. Brooke aren't with us tonight. Food service, Mrs. Aborn.
Yes, we are providing breakfast for MAP testing. It's going very well. We still have three weeks left to do this. We start in elementary next week, and elementary will also begin April, the first week in May. We take it to very poor graders and teachers. It's been very easy to work with. I'll take the breakfast to the classroom. This middle school routine is fixed at 6th grade, and I am with the teachers and the parent down there. So it's working really good. It's going together. Our participation has, I don't want to say doubled, but it's up there and potentially even, and that's amazing.
Thank you. In 21st Century, Berestin, Mrs. Kramer isn't with us tonight. I save the special services director till last. Mrs. Lee, would you stand? Do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I wanted to tell you about initial evaluations this year, and in early childhood, we had 17 initial evaluations, and out of those 17, 15 qualified for speech and language programs. In K through 12, we had 27 initial evaluations and 14 qualified programs, and we currently still have seven in the works, and we've got three weeks to get them in so that they can start off the beginning of the year. So we've had a very productive year.
Hang on just a minute. I save you till last for a reason. She has one more board meeting before she retires, and we're going to be really sad to see her leave. How many years have you been with Ava?
Twenty-one years at Ava, nine years at Seymour. Thirty.
At this meeting because so many times retirees don't show up at their last four minutes. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Executive and Administrative Reports, Dr. Lawler.
First thing, Ava Victory has made a formal announcement that they are moving their program to Seymour, whether the building sells or does not sell. So we've had several parents call us to talk to us about our enrollment processes, and we have to wait till August to see what their students are going to do. They have several students that potentially could attend Ava if they choose not to travel to Seymour, and so we are going to have an enrollment on April 28th, all day long, in the superintendent's office, so that we can kind of keep a pulse on our classroom numbers and see if we need to employ additional staff for any of those changes. I have your calendar attached of different things that are coming up. April 28th is the next important meeting that we have in Mountain Grove. It starts at 5:45, and we have no one registered for that, so we need to tell Mrs. Sterling because we need to get that done.
Let me on there.
She needs to know from everyone if they're going to be attending that.
And we will meet here at the school right together for you, new board members.
And it starts at 5:45 as registration begins, so I recommend a meet at 5:00. That'll give us plenty of time to park, pick up the school.
And normally, they have a new board orientation brief with the new board members.
Did you get everybody? Just three? The last day of school is Friday, May 13th. Graduations, May 14th at 7:00 at Sylvie Field. Because of parking, if you're new to the board, there will be a lot of families driving there at 7:00, so I recommend you get there at 6:00. We'll meet on the concrete pad underneath the arched Ava entrance at 6:45, and we'll move on to this field as one group as soon as the high school principal tells us to. We'll follow their... So, May 14th, I would recommend being at the Field at 6:00. We had our pre-bid meeting on the day, last week, and we had several people that had submitted questions prior to the deadline, and we addressed every one of those questions at the meeting, and the meeting went just as we expected. It was a nice meeting. And then finally, I have committee assignments. If you, now is the time to change committees. I talked to the new board members. They know what committees are open. I'm just going to read through the list and tell who's on it. It's the time to change if you want to change. If we need at least one board member for every committee, we can have more if we choose. So A+ advisory, I have Mr. Spurlock.
Attendants, I need a board member for attendance.
I'll do that too. Bart? Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see it. No, I've got a committee.
CSEP, I have Randy. Curriculum, did you want to stand up? CSEP.
I don't hear. Are we continuing to issue?
We'll still meet here early to review our progress, our targets.
Yeah, let me on.
Curriculum, we need somebody for curriculum. Troy?
Yeah.
Communications, I have Randy and Ron.
Somebody else can have that up there.
Did you want to open up?
It doesn't matter. I mean, if somebody wants to, that's fine.
Elementary handbook, I have Mr. Ellison. Guidance and Counseling, I have Ms. Aborn. High school handbook, Ron Wallace. Insurance, I need somebody for insurance.
Yeah, right in your alley.
Middle school handbook, we need somebody for middle school handbook. Policy review, I have Mr. Spurlock, which the whole board does policy review. Professional development, I have Mr. Spurlock.
Doesn't matter if somebody wants any of mine, take them.
Salary, I have Mr. Johnson. Special services, Mrs. Aborn. Technology, Mr. Wallace. Title line, Mr. Wallace. Vocational, Mr. Ellison and Mr. Johnson. Vocational administries. Vocational business, I have Mr. Ellison. Well, are there any additional ones you want to... Mr. Tredway, any additional ones?
Could be added to salary. Along with Byrne.
Gotcha.
Somebody wants to...
Thanks. Does anybody want off of one? And that is my end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Henry.
To go along with Ms. Swash, testing started at the high school EOCs. Today was an ACT day at the high school. Middle school's been testing. Elementary starts next week. It's going well. John Doan has been working hard at the middle school, Mr. Gilmore, and also all of our counselors. There's just a lot that goes into this, and they've been doing a good job. Couple items on grants. In the back of the middle school, you'll notice some new fitness equipment. We're still waiting on some of that to get shipped, but that concrete has been poured, and that's through our Healthy Schools grant that Coach Leonard heads up. Also, from our grant that we wrote earlier this year, the CES Safety Grant. All of those projects are complete, and that money has been received. One last thing that didn't make my report, which got emailed today. DESI announced that the State Board approved those new standards that we've been talking about. Those are the standards that are written by Missourians. Those have been reviewed. They had group meetings. I think Dr. Byrne was on one of those meetings, or on one of those groups, Social Studies. So anyway, those have been approved, so we're excited to have those standards in place and for teachers to start so we can move forward.
One of the upcoming events that I did not get on my calendars, the Healthy Students Grant is having their Day in the Park Saturday. So if you have kids or grandkids and you'd like to take them to the park from 1:00 to 3:00, we're sponsoring several fitness, healthy activities for our students in the community.
What day is that?
Saturday, 1:00 to 3:00.
Then I'll look for you, Mr. Henry. Next is the Discussion Action Items, State and Federal Assurances.
This is just a yearly checklist that we sign, that we will spend our state and federal money according to the rules and regulations and procedures, and we have been to training for that, and we are prepared to assure that we'll do that properly.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve this assurances statement? Motion by Mr. Wallace, seconded by Mrs. Aborn. All in favor? Period 7-0. Next item is MSBA policy changes.
We have 12 policy updates that have been recommended by MSBA, and MSBA is the Missouri School Board Association, and they recommend policy changes at least three times a year. This is one of the big years, or big changes. They have 12. We sometimes review these and implement them at that one meeting, and sometimes we table them to the next meeting for further review. Just real quickly, BCA aligns that we do our delegates and alternates at our reorganizational meeting, which we did tonight. That is not a critical one, but it was something that we did. BCCA, the policies, this one affects our delegate assembly because they reorganized and restructured that, so this policy outlines how that's been restructured. EB, AB is a critical policy. It has to do with our chemical hazard communication program and how we talk about asbestos, hazardous chemicals, lead, and emergency drills. EBAC is similar, and it has to do with our pest management. GB is a policy recode. It's the same policy, but it combines professional support health. It has to do with our health insurance and timelines for all those different programs for benefits. GBEBC recognizes that the FBI, the Missouri State Highway Patrol, and the Sexual Defender Registry are now accessed electronically, and so we don't have to send those off and wait for those. We can access them, so we no longer necessarily keep those on file in our office because they're in an electric database system at this time, and we have been trained on that as well. It also clarifies that an applicant can be excluded for hiring if it's found suitable by the superintendent if there's something in their existing background check. We can just exclude them from the process. IGAEB is critical, and it says that as we are teaching our sexual education classes, we must include sexual predators online, so that has to be included in our curriculum. They will talk about safe internet use and appropriate behaviors on the internet. They will talk about safe internet use and appropriate behaviors on the internet. Jeca is a critical policy that talks about our students and residency rules, if they have parents in the military that are deployed outside of Missouri, they are automatically considered residents. JECC is just a name change from North Central Association of Colleges and Schools to Advanced Ed. It is not critical. JHCB is a critical policy that says that our children enrolling in preschool must have records demonstrating age-appropriate immunizations or documentation, that that is in progress. JHG is a policy that will help us, um, make sure that every person, whether it's a school bus driver, a cafeteria worker, a custodian, we are all mandated reporters and it clearly spells that out. And it adds student-on-student harassment that has to be reported. KKB, these changes are optional and it's just, it's for our pre-service teachers that are doing student teaching, it would allow them to videotape, which is part of their new portfolios requirement. So we can allow that if we choose this policy. And we, we know that students aren't allowed to be videotaped, that's all recorded in our offices, so we know that ahead of time, so I have no problem because this is a benefit to our pre-service students and I'm always happy to have pre-service students today. So, we can do this this month or table? If people haven't had a chance to.
Anybody want to table and wait till next month, or are you ready to go?
I'd like to table. Okay, it's the time you get it.
Okay, we'll wait until our May meeting to, to, um, to look at those and, uh, we have plenty of time writing on all of the, yeah, okay. They wouldn't go into effect until...
The hazardous waste, we would need before summer, before winter.
Alright, then we will table that and, uh, so next item is the Salary Committee Presentation. Mr. Hall?
So we met earlier this month, we had two representatives from each building, as well as Ms. Clayton representing non-certified staff. Uh, we listened to a presentation from Dr. Lawler on what it would be like for everyone to receive a step this year. We also listened to Mrs. Nash, she presented a stipend for Sarah Sacco for TRI-M, is that correct? And Sarah's done this for two years without being paid, so she did it on her own time. She's tracked her hours and she presented that. Um, just some numbers, as far as base pay, you know, there's eight schools in the SCA, Ava ranks fifth. Masters plus 10, so teacher has their master's degree and they work 10 years, we rank number one in the SCA in terms of pay. Health insurance paid by the school board, we rank third. Houston's the only district in the SCA that pays 100% of insurance. So after this meeting, we had three requests and my committee members will present those.
And we're asking for a step on the salary schedule, including those who are currently maxed out on that.
We're asking the board to consider an increase of 1762 per employee in the amount that the board contributes towards our health insurance. This would allow employees to have either Plan 7, 10, or 11 with out-of-pocket expense and the out-of-pocket expense for employees for health insurance for Plan 3 would be reduced from 17, 7949 to 6147. The out-of-pocket expense for employees on Plan 4 would be reduced from 5767 to $40.05. And we just ask for you to consider this, please.
And to add a stipend of 2.9% for Ms. Sacco for the sponsoring of the TRI-M, which she currently doesn't receive anything.
Any questions for this to make? Hearing none, thank you. And we're taking that information, uh, to compile with our budget to see how the name numbers work. When is our budget workshop? June? And June, we'll have a budget workshop and, uh, have their recommendations in several scenarios with our budget. Okay, next item is Guidance and Counseling Review.
The, uh, Mr. Henry? The guidance review is in front of you and I won't go through all of those. Our counselors do a whole lot at our school and I think every, every teacher administrator would say the same thing. The, the role of counselor starts to, to help students and then they get some things added on, so we work on, um, career things and we work on testing and, um, they wear a whole lot of hats in school. Some of the things that, um, we're especially proud of, that they're, um, they're doing a really good job with, with our kids with is transitions. We've talked about this at board meetings before, as kids transition from elementary to middle, middle to high, and high school to their career to college, those are significant changes in their lives and all of our counselors during those transitions work with the other counselor, um, that, in that situation, in that position and, uh, make sure our students and the parents of those students have as easy a transition as possible. Um, also career, starting in elementary, our, our counselors do a good job of starting to highlight some of the career opportunities for our students. As you go through there and look at some of the, uh, the reviews and the questions, Kara Roberts, Brooke Melton, and Katie Burkoff, and part-time Jeff Martin, um, they, they, Katrina Mattney is the secretary at the high school, they make up our counseling guidance program and that's the reason it's very, very good. We've got students that deal with a whole lot of things, a lot of us, um, speaking for myself, I, it gets hard to, it's hard to understand sometimes where they're coming from. We're worried about homework and tests and some of those things, but they're, they're catching them. They're catching them meeting some of those basic needs. We're excited about our care to learn this year and Ms. Burkoff at the high school is gonna hit that up, but just as, as their position naturally fits, the counselor in each one of those buildings is gonna, um, gonna work with that a lot. Um, needs there, um, used to that high school spot was two full positions, that's dropped back, they continue to take on things as, as administrators see fit and, and just as needs come up in the school, uh, but our counselors do a really good job, we're proud of it.
Do we have a motion to approve the Guidance Counseling Review? By Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Strong, all in favor? Carried 7-0. Next is Renew the Depository Agreement with First Home.
We have a five-year agreement with them and we are recommending to renew it in five years, but we renew it annually. Their interest was guaranteed not to drop below .55 and it's currently at 1.05. Their direct deposits with Mrs. Ray have worked very smoothly, the staff is friendly and helpful and as far as we know, everything's going great and we would recommend a yearly renewal.
We have a motion to approve that, uh, for the next year. Seconded by Mr. Strong, seconded by Mr. Johnson, all in favor? Carried 7-0. Next is the, uh, To Approve Contract for Transportation of Public School Children.
So, this has been on the agenda for quite some time and I, I've given you the draft version that the subcommittee worked on with the school attorney and it is ready for approval.
I, I need to declare a conflict of interest with Larry Benson on First Home. Anything that him needs to set out, but shepherded. Okay, did everybody understand, uh, Lowell is first cousin to Mr. Benson and so his contract will have to be pulled and not approved as in the vote.
We're just approving the contract language.
We're just approving the language of the contract. I don't, I didn't know if I needed to declare it now or the next one, but just declared.
Yes, Troy. Mr. President, critical information concerning the next item on the agenda has come to my attention and I think this information should be presented for the board. What you're holding, that's a signed list of signatures signed by all the current contractor drivers that have chosen not to accept the proposed contract to be considered here tonight. I would like to make a motion. I make a motion to do away with the proposed contract being considered here tonight. I also propose the school district to offer the current transportation contractors the option to individually opt out of the purchase agreement between them and the school district signed in February, allowing the school district's transportation system to return to the previous operations with modifications to be negotiated between the school board and the contractors with attorney approval.
Who's the spokesman for the Rowd Owner Association?
I am.
Did you understand Mr. Treadway's motion?
Yes.
And are you in favor of this?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a second?
I think there's something on a statement that needs to change, you've called it a settlement. I think we need to use the language of the attorney, it's a settlement agreement.
Read that part again, Troy, because I didn't catch that.
Where a purchase agreement is?
It's called settlement agreement, settlement agreement, settlement agreement.
The language just needs to stay parallel.
Can you read the whole thing again?
Please.
I make a motion to do away with the proposed contract being considered here tonight. I also propose the school district to offer the current transportation contractors the option to individually opt out of the settlement agreement between them and the school district signed in February, allowing the school district's transportation system to return to previous operations with modifications to be negotiated between the school board and the contractors with attorney approval.
I would make a recommendation that that's two separate motions. The settlement agreement, because it was voted on in closed session, I think needs to may, remain a legal agreement. It's bound, it's passed the 21 days agreement, so it would become legal, so I think that needs to be done in closed session, but to, um, not approve the contract, I think is, that's just my recommendation to the board based on legal advice. The settlement agreement is all done in closed session, that's a legal...
It's a, I would just echo that, just because it was done legal, we, we, you know, through legal advice from our attorneys, it was always a legal deal. I feel like, you know, we're taking, throwing it into, and that's not, the same thing can be done in closed session, there's no question, but since it is a legal issue, the second thing that I would just say to that is, is when we did that agreement, we did it because it was our understanding that the association wanted to do it as a whole, they had to accept it as a whole. All drivers had to accept the whole thing as one whole association, so then to turn around, I think, I, I'm not speaking against it, but what I'm saying, I think that that would necessitate some discussion, you know, to, to turn around and, and then say, okay, we're gonna break it down individually when, you know, according to their stipulations to begin with, it had to be done as, as an entire group. Um, I, I think that would be something that you would have to seek, um, legal counsel on before we did.
Part of the wording of the separation or settlement agreement is that it's a whole organization.
It's done as an entire organization. Yeah.
So, I think we need to break this...
What is the first?
Well, we don't accept the contract, that's fine.
Okay. So, we will need, uh, what's it called? No, uh, will you pull your second, your motion? Resent, rescension? Do you want to rescind your second?
I'll rescind.
And Troy, would you rescind your motion?
Yes.
At this time, okay. Then, uh, the... I've never done this before, I've never done this before.
No.
I've never had to rescind one before. Yeah, I didn't think so, so the mover and the seconder have rescinded those motions for advice to go take that to closed. And so now we go ahead with the wording of the contract. Okay?
You ready? I make a motion to do away with the proposed contract being considered here tonight.
Okay.
Awesome.
And seconded by Mrs. Aborn. Okay, further discussion?
Individuals.
It doesn't have Larry's name on it or anybody's name on it. Okay, discussion, anyone? Okay, all in favor of, uh, Mr. Treadway's motion? One, two, three, four, opposed? And it carried four to three.
So, the next part is tied to that contract, so we need to reject.
Okay. How do we do that?
We just reject.
Totally, we have time to motion to reject. Okay, uh, Dr. Lawler just said that the next item G is to award the RFQs for the contracted transportation of public school children and that is tied directly to this contract, so we're going to have to reject that award, so we will need a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Aborn, second? What are we doing?
We're rejecting all the RFQs that were submitted because they're all submitted for by your contract.
The next item on the agenda. Okay, seconded by Mr. Treadway, alright. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carried 7-0. Okay. So we need a motion to, you say it?
I will need direction from the board, I don't know if we need a motion, but everybody needs to understand that I'll be composing a letter to everybody that submitted an RFQ and letting them know that the board's decision of the existing contract that we're referencing has been voted, hasn't been approved, so that process is voided.
I think that needs to be a motion.
Okay.
So, do I have a motion with what Dr. Lawler had to say here?
Um, that the board needs to make their motion, that a board, I don't make a motion, if somebody will make a motion, that the board communicates with everyone that submitted an RFQ, that the contract reference has not been approved, therefore all submitted RFQs are rejected.
Does somebody like to entertain that as a motion? I'll make a motion. Who said that? Mr. Strong, okay, second. And Mr. Treadway, alright, all in favor? And they carried 7-0. Okay, we're at the end of our agenda, but before we adjourn, if I could let everybody to, uh, let me, let me say this, because this is our last board meeting before graduation. I'm not going to attend Ava R1's graduation this year and I wanted to make this statement publicly so that everyone knows why. My son graduates law school on that same day at 2 o'clock in Naples, Florida, and I can't be both places at once. And so I wanted... Unless somebody has an airplane. I would be willing to ride back with you and make it here by that evening, but I just wanted to make that as a public announcement. And I'm going to have Mrs. Nash also make that announcement at graduation, I don't want anyone to think that there's a, there's a reason, there would be no other reason, but this I cannot miss. With that, we need a motion to adjourn and go into closed executive session. Our next regular board meeting is May 19th at 6:30 in this boardroom. And I have a motion by Mr. Wallace and a second by Mrs. Aborn. All in favor? Carried 7-0. Thank you all for attending our April meeting.